I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the legislative. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised in the event of a fire emergency and alarm will sound, please know all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request everyone turn your cell phones to silent. Thank you for your cooperation. Additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda. Mr. Malasani?
Yes, under eight eleven, eight twelve, we have approval of best value property purchasing agreement and the department property purchasing agreement with the Amia Group.
Consent agenda, I take a motion for one through ten on the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. Number five, communications correspondence. Anything from you, Mr. Malasani?
No, other than I shared with you in the backup notes, the addition to the consent agenda regarding corporations and revenue status reports that now be implemented. Molly?
Thank you. And as far as points of pride, we have our adulting one-on-one series continued with the presentation to the seniors about entrepreneurship. And congratulations to the cast and crew of Suzuko the Musical. It was a great production. Helen Sarafini from The Angry Rooster came to speak to the sixth grade CTE students. And the class of 2024 enjoyed a fun-filled trip to Orlando, Florida. Our seniors enjoyed two full days at Universal Studios while enjoying time with each other.
Our middle school page turners traveled to Wolcott Street School in Leroy for the Middle School Page Turner Regional Championship. Despite coming up short at regionals, the squad was presented with their divisional championship plaque for attending the most, obtaining the most points overall at both the fall and spring competitions.
Calmum Raiders were well represented at the 2024 Glow With Your Hands Healthcare Event at GCC. The event welcomed students and employers from across the Genesee, Livingston, Orleans, and Wyoming counties to engage in hands-on career exploration while learning about profitable and rewarding careers in healthcare. Our students enjoyed time at career workshops, hands-on demonstrations with first responders, a career expo, and lunch with college and university representatives.
Our middle and high school student councils traveled to Finger Lakes Community College to represent us at the New York State Council on Leadership and Student Activities Spring Leadership Conference. The theme was Lucky to be a Leader and was highlighted by keynote speaker Duncan Kirkwood, who delivered his message on being resilient and never quitting. Raiders also attended student-led breakout sessions and participated in a community service give back.
RC softball opened the season with a big win over York, fifteen to zero. The bats were alive as the Raiders had thirteen hits in the game. Highlights were Emma Years had eight Ks allowing three hits. And Madison Weiskull was three for four with four runs and two RBIs. And Shia Dursowski, Dursowski?
Dursowski.
Yeah, two for three with two runs. And Maya Wilson was two for three with a double, two runs scored and RBI. Isabella Cochran had a triple, two RBIs, and Bree Lynn had a homerun.
Our defending sectional champion varsity tennis team opened their 2024 season hosting Hornell. The Raiders swept Hornell five to zero en route to their first win of the season. Single wins Nate Dow, Oliver Johnson, Jeremiah Anderson. Doubles wins Garrett Thompson, Lorenzo Martel, and Max Pore and Michael Gere.
And we would also like to thank the Technology Club for our new name tags for all our school board members. Moving on to the public forum, no guests with the board either, correct? And superintendent's report, we have the elementary and middle and high school compact committee updates.
Hi, everybody.
Hey there.
All right, I'm going to update you on where we've been with compact. Mike, feel free to jump in. He's our board rep there. One of the biggest goals I think I had was trying to figure out, this was my own personal goal, a way to get more members on our compact committee. And so I am pleased to say that with every meeting, we have one or two new members that come and join us. So I put the word out in many different ways, but specifically for pre-K and our kindergarten information nights this year, I've dedicated like a slide and some time to talk about what compact is and that shared decision-making and some of the things we talk about, also trying to recruit some new members into our PTO. So as you know, I'll run the compact meeting first and then we go into our PTO meeting. So they tend to be the same people. So the work does blend together, but so I'm happy to say we have more members. One of the things that we do every year is the code, look over the code of conduct. We did our second read on Thursday. I don't have any feedback or suggestions to give to the board or to the admin team from our compact committee this year. We also talked about New York State testing and we're in the midst of it right now. And in my building, it's the first time we've done computer-based. So I was keeping everybody up to date. Today was day one and we had a very smooth day. So looking forward to the second day tomorrow and no glitches. Everything has been going off smoothly. Another piece going on with getting more recruits onto compact, one thing that we focused on a lot is really beefing back up our volunteers and who we welcome into the building. So getting assemblies in and also getting parents more involved. So coming up, we have our STEAM museum. It's a STEAM mobile education company that is coming in on the 24th and they asked for six volunteers. So of course I reached out to my compact and PTO and we're well, we are well stacked for that day. And we've been just really taking a look at, you know, being thoughtful about the assemblies that we bring in. How does it match with the curriculum that we're trying to, you know, boost and also give kids experiences? And STEM being the biggest piece because I am building that STEM program right now. So having compact there to say, this is what my kids, you know, these are what the kids are really interested in. This is what I'm seeing, I think will help in the school and enrich their experience has been very helpful. And the biggest part too is we've been talking, and this is something, if Mr. Green is here. Say hi to everybody, Mr. Green. One of the things I paused and we waited on until he came on board was to really talk about common language and expectations in our building. So we all have, you know, our own expectations and we have rules that we follow, but they weren't really posted anywhere. That common expectation wasn't really synthesized. So when Pete came on board, it's something that he took initiative to do. And we worked with our teachers and the compact committee and our students to come up with. And I'll give you a draft unveiling of what the committee, and this is what I did on Thursday, showed our PT or our compact committee. So similar to how the middle high school has champion five, we came up with Raider five. And using the pause, our logo, so we need a graphic designer to kind of help us put this together. But the common expectations is that we're going to be accepting, we're going to be kind, be safe, and be respectful. And then of course adding that golden rule that doesn't go out of style, treat others the way you want to be treated. So this went through many rounds of vetting, ton of collaboration. Compact committee had a voice in it, same with our student council, our elementary student council, and of course our faculty and staff. So this has been a real joy to go through and really sift what mattered to us. And it sounds so simple and so basic, but believe it or not, there are so many words for, you know, how we want to represent being kind and being accepting. And so really coming down to what it means to us, what's our Calmum way? And then looking into next year with our compact is really talking about how do we implement this? Not just in one year, but two, three, when it starts to kind of fade away. So how do we keep the hype going? And I'll be looking for our compact to really help me bridge this, not only here at school, but at home too. So I'm excited about that. And then we always have on our agenda, every meeting is parent square and how that's going and how the transition with that communication platform is. And I received nothing but amazing feedback. Every time I put this on and give a chance for a voice to be heard, it really is, thank you. It's going really great. So that's all I have. Mike, anything to add, sir?
I do not have a nice presentation prepared like you did. But I would like to say to us here, as a new principal and assistant principal, I think you've done a really nice job making collaborative meetings a priority. I think you've done a nice job. Last year, we had a bunch of fifth grade parents move out of the compact PTO. And you've done a nice job drawing more people in. And, you know, I see these people, they come to the beef barn, they're excited to go to the compact meeting on Thursday. So it's kind of neat to see the way things matriculate through the community. And I think you're doing a nice job.
Thank you. We'll recruit more come next year.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
All right, compact committee update. Board rep for us is Liz Dietrich. And I will just say that I am grateful. When I started at the beginning, the very first time we talked about compact, I told you the room was full and there were lots of people. We're back down to our pretty core group. And so I just want to give a shout out to Liz and a handful of others that come to every meeting and just continue to help us push the mission that we set out on. So for tonight, I actually gave you guys all an envelope that has in it what I would call our finished product. Although in the world of a school, nothing is ever quite finished. But in your packet, you will find the work of this year's compact committee. We revised the applications for both the National Junior Honor Society, which we're going to do induction for this evening. So we've now even dry-run this first application. The kids getting inducted tonight, actually, we're able to go through this process. So we've already benefited. And then the second one is actually the high school version for the National Honor Society. And so we started off looking at some samples from other schools. This was definitely, let's say, one of the top priorities of the compact committee when we were reviewing what we should focus on. And so we have really grinded every single time we were together, looking at drafts, finding things other schools were doing that we thought was done really well. So the finished product that you have there is an application that really looks a lot like a job application. It's got the flow from sort of start to finish. Priorities for for us, that checkbox, those checkboxes on the front of the application process where before kids submit their application, they're going to be able to go through and say, yes, I have all of these things. And then just the flow. So you'll see that the middle school, the seven through nine, looks a lot like the high school in terms of the expectation. So we feel like when you're filling out this application as a parent and child, you're getting a sense of the kinds of things you have to do in order to get into the next level of National Honor Society. So it's got that progressive feel to it. Certainly less community service hours at the middle level requirements than what you're going to see at the high school. So finished product from our team. Liz, feel free to add anything you'd like.
I don't have anything to add.
Did this come about because of some promotion and rumblings about about people that were filling out the information and not getting selected?
So we know from previous years that it has become a little bit uncomfortable even for teachers to stay advisors because if people don't really understand how to apply for National Honor Society or National Junior Honor Society, it kind of feels like you've sent my child this letter that said that they qualified and then they didn't get in. It feels kind of personal. So we were getting, I would say, a lot of negative communication from families, not understanding how that their child did this whole process. And it's a lengthy application regardless its format. It was a lengthy application. So a lot of time and energy invested into trying to get into the society. To not be chosen and get that letter saying that you did not get in seemed to feel very personal for families. I was unable to keep advisors because we were getting just a lot of, I would say, just that negative feeling. It was personal. Last year, I sent the letters whether or not kids were accepted to National Honor Society or not. I signed them as principal just so that I would be that first phone call for a parent that was feeling pretty emotional, just to remind them of the process. So between that being something that definitely we've been experiencing across the high school and then when we started to set goals as a compact committee, this actually came up from a couple of parents. I had a few parents that joined compact, one that comes every single time and was feeling frustrated by this particular process. So it resurfaced as something that we should look into. I will tell you that Molly Blyer, she's the secretary at the high school and also has taken over the National Honor Society. She is also on our compact committee. So it's been great to just have her in the room where you've got a group of parents that are really collaborative with her and with me in terms of building something. So you're watching lots of rounds of revision for several months. So it was twofold. We knew it was a problem and now it's really transparent. Teacher feedback already from the process for National Junior Honor Society, since they've just done the selection process, is that this process felt so objective. They didn't feel like they were deciding whether or not a child was getting in. There's rubrics that are accompanied with this for the teachers. So things just seemed very clean to them, like you either have the points or you don't, making it feel just much more formal for everybody's sake. We could explain why you're in and why you're not in, basically. So very transparent and specific.
Thank you.
May I put you on the spot for a second? Could you give us an example of what your phone call might be like? Johnny's mom is calling you.
Sure.
Can you tell us, can you just describe what that, because you made yourself, you're the one getting the phone call? Just give us an example of what the phone call might sound like?
Sure. So I feel like the first thing that parents often ask is the why. They want to understand why. So the GPA or when you look at their overall average, like that's the easiest indicator that you qualify for National Honor Society. So the way we do our recruitment is you actually get a letter mailed home to you saying that you you qualify to apply. And so now from there, it's around to get into the National Honor Society, you actually have to meet the criteria, not just of scholarship, but also of character and leadership and service. And so even saying those words, character, leadership, and service, you are starting to get more to the personal side of how people, kids, invest in the community that they serve. So parents are often asking the question, like, my child's character wasn't good enough for you? You don't feel like my child's commitment to this particular club or activity was representative of his or her leadership? So my conversations are typically trying to sort of pull those things apart, right? It's not really personal. It's that we have a rubric that you don't see and within the rubric, there's criteria. So kids were filled, they fill out the application, but they're doing it kind of blindly. But we know that we have an expectation of sixteen hours of community service. So now we've made that much more clear. Like in this process, you're now going to see that. So trying to pull it apart is really what my conversations with families sound like. In the letters, which we've done now for probably the entire time I've been principal, I do require that the letter that says that a child did not make it into National Honor Society should give them feedback on what about their application? Could they do to better themselves for another round of application? Should they still qualify in the next selection process? So I keep copies of those after the letters go out. So I also will flip the paper over and talk to the parent about a place where their child might be able to do that and how might we support? So they don't have enough community service hours. Let me talk to you about places in the community that your child could get more actively involved. So solution orientation.
Thank you.
Of course. We will review the code of conduct when we meet this week. That's on our list of things to do. And the compact committee is now down to the two big events that we participate in. Camp Raider is coming and my compact committee members often help with Camp Raider, which I appreciate. And we put on as a committee, the senior banquet. So we're getting ready to go full bore now into event planning for the next couple of months.
Interesting thing about the senior banquet, I was doing the history of our school district. Back in 1899, actually held the first senior banquet. Long-standing tradition in this school.
Very generous community, very, very generous community and so being a great event.
Where did you, what wall was that written in and what?
I was at the Big Springs Museum and I was studying, putting together the history wall. That's where I learned that.
Was this on microfiche?
No.
It was in Mrs. Hamilton's tab.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bellic, before we go to old business, can we switch?
I've got yours.
Yeah, and I was trying to look up something and it's like, why am I seeing Mike's information instead of mine? Of course. Okay, we have no old business. New business, number one, approval of transportation requests to out-of-district non-public schools for the 2024-2025 school year. Resulted the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the transportation request to out-of-district, out-of-district non-public schools for the 2024-2025 school year. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
A second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Again, four students, three families, two locations, Hope Hall and St. Agnes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? That motion carried. Number two, presentation of the 2024-2025 school budget.
Okay, Mr. Nardong, would you like to join me on gears? Okay, so tonight, as you know, where we postponed last meeting, last Tuesday's meeting with the hope that we would have an on-time budget. They're very, very close. The information that we got today from Governor Hochul is that the likelihood St. Agnes would be around 2.8% for most school districts. I think right now we're planning 2.4% with foundation ages to be conservative, not knowing where they're actually going to land. There's still a lot of negotiations taking place. Tonight too, we will adopt the proposed 2425 school budget, as well as we'll also approve the BOSE's budget, admin budget, is the information I've shared with you in your board packets. If we're able to accomplish those two tasks tonight, unless the board has a will, I would recommend that we cancel the April 22nd meeting. Again, the only intent behind that meeting was to approve the BOSE's admin budget and it would not be necessary if we were to take action tonight. Then in March, May 14th, we'll have a public hearing on the proposed budget. It'd be right here in the Van Corle room, or the Corle room for that matter. And May 21st, the annual district budget vote and Board of Education elections are, what's coming our way. So for those that have not been very active or not been attending meetings or checking the board minutes, just wanted everybody to know that our guidelines, calendar, all the various budget presentations in this proposed budget tonight is all at our website. And other additional budget information is there as well. All the disclosures that need to take place per commissioners' regs and so forth, they're all on our website. All right, you have seen these slides for every budget presentation now. So I won't harp too much on them, but general support went up a total of 5.98%. Biggest thing there is technology increases. We did drop a staff member, moved that to BOSE's, so that's the biggest increase there. And structural, biggest part of our budget, went up 3.52%, mainly salaries there and also the addition of the second SRO on the budget. Transportation went up 6.21%. We did see an increase in contractual costs just because of inflation. Everything's much more expensive, parks are more expensive. So we threw some money in there and then you have your salary increases there as well. Community service decreased there due to a stipend out position rather than part of somebody's actual physical job. And employee benefits, employee benefits, we're lucky, it went up 1.3%. Reason for it is because we actually do an overlook of our entire health insurance bill. At the beginning of every month, we look at it and itemize it by employee. So based on what we put last year, because we had a lot of open positions, some of those positions that we filled might not have taken health insurance and that's why you didn't see the rate increase as much as it could have. And debt service, big drop there. Again, you're going to see a corresponding decrease in building aid to offset that and that is for the paying off of one of our bonds. That will go up, by the way, once we finance the 2526 capital project, which will either be a full year of aid in 2526 or a half a year, depending on when we get the final cost reports finalized. So this is a look at our total expenditures. So you can see down at the bottom, we're proposing a budget of $20,605,985. I've already been tasked to remember that number by the penny. And there's just a detail of a planned fund balance at the end there. Extra $100,000, that's added on the expense and the revenue side, just as a protection for over-expending the budget. It's not that we're taxing more for it, it's a placeholder in there on both sides of the budget. And then revenue. So you can see property taxes and sales tax, pilots are going up 2.99%. Our tax cap was 2.65, the extra percentage increase is based on the pilots. State aid, it is overall down. I know Mr. Malasani said state aid right now is at 2.4, estimating to be a 2.8. Just remember, your building aid is a part of that, so that's why it went down. Federal aid, that's just Medicaid. We don't know exactly how much we're going to get based on claims every year. So we left that flat at $20,000. Local revenue, that's anything from the municipalities using our fuel depot, contract out services, stuff like that. Appropriated fund balance is what we appropriate from our savings account, not exactly our reserves, just our savings account. That's sitting at 465. It's really 365 if you look at the budget and then that extra $100,000 that I was talking about is also included in that number. And to balance this year's budget, we did have to increase the reliance of the reserves about $250,000 this year. So that is the increase there. We put a little bit more money in the vehicle and equipment reserve. Obviously, the price is going up of everything, trucks, it's tough to buy a truck now for $50,000. So we did increase that reserve just in case if the budget does come out favorably, we can purchase some piece of equipment. And then the rest, we either threw in the retirement or TRS reserve, which we have expenses every year to cover those. So overall, 1.17% increase on both sides of the budget. So I just want to go back one slide or two slides here. Jeremy mentioned is 2.99%, so the tax levy increase is 2.65. When you take into account all the others, that equates to 2.99%. Just want to make sure you understood that. So the other proposition that we're asking the community to approve would be a purchase of a new school bus, a combustible engine school bus at $180,000. Capital outlet project, again, you have to do at least $10,000 work in a particular building and up to $100,000. We are, this year, we're looking to remove some asbestos abatement and remediation in our, in our basement, in the cafeteria, and also some exterior concrete removal, replacement, and site restoration. Basically, all of our sidewalks that are residential size, moving them to commercial size. So this one out here is a 1964 sidewalk. Point out here, that will be replaced and also comes back to our handicap spot. And then also the sidewalk in between the middle and elementary, the diagonal sidewalk. So that's the work that we're looking at for $100,000.
How much bigger is a sidewalk going to be?
It's, I don't want to tell you, but I'm going to guess it's looks like it's a six-foot or seven-foot sidewalk. It's large enough where you can drive a vehicle on it without rutting it up. So right now, I think it's a 36-inch because it's commercial, excuse me, it's residential. It's not very common. You wouldn't see that in any new build or in a commercial property. Typically, they're five to six feet.
I just thought that maybe there might be something different to throw the money at as opposed to making your sidewalk a little bit bigger.
Well, it's not just about making it bigger. They're, like I said, 1964 vintage, they're all uneven, they're cracked and so forth. They just, they're past their useful life.
Point taken, thank you.
Yep. And so your tax cap, as Mr. Nardong spoke to back in February, March, when you run the formula, we're at 2.65%. And then again, just an idea, always use a 10-year average. So overall, we have roughly a 10-year average, 1992 yes votes, and that is skewed by the 2021. Let's please understand that when we had 882 votes that came in, but typically we're right around that 350 to 450, unless there's a board race. When there's a board race, there's more people that show up to vote. And you can see the yes versus no's, right around 75%. Three out of four people feel that the budget that's before them, they feel is a good quality budget that enhances the conditions and opportunities for our students. Tax levy change is over 10 years, on average, is 1.84%. And our budget differences is on average 2.12% for 10-year average. So when it's all said and done, the main question that we get is how much is my tax bill going to go up? And the answer as of right now is not all the information is there to answer that question. So when tax rates are determined, there's a multitude of different factors. There's assessment rates per town. Remember, we have five towns spanning three different counties. There's equalization rates in those towns, which is pretty much the state telling you if you're at assessment, at the correct assessment, or if you're under valuation. And then also you have the actual, the yeah, assessments per town, and that changes every year. Thank you about that. So pretty much what we look at is we look at $100,000 home.
pretty much what we look at is, we look at a $100,000 home with a $30,000 star. So to determine that, we used our tax rate from the current year, which is 23-24. It's $15.13. It does have to go out six decimal places, but I'll just leave it at that. So if your total assessed value is 70,000, which is that $100,000 minus a $30,000 basic star, you take that 70,000 divided by 1,000, multiplied by the tax rate. So 70,000 divided by 1,000 is 70, times that by the tax rate, your tax bill's $1,059. Theoretically, if we increase the levy 2.65%, that means everybody's bill is going to go up 2.65%. So with that, your bill would go up roughly $28 a year. However, is that going to happen? No. A lot of those different factors affect those tax rates, and it could increase or decrease more based on what happens in the nearby towns. But best-case scenario, where we're at right now, is $28 on a $100,000 home with a basic star, and $48 with a $150,000 home.
So what happens if our community says this is not the budget for them, and they want us to reconsider it? So the board may submit another budget for our community to vote on, all right? This can be the same budget or revised. The second part of it is defeated, it results in contingency budget. So if the budget goes down, you don't get a third opportunity like we used to do in the 70s, 80s, and early 90s. You get a second shot. Once it goes a second shot, you cannot increase your budget from last year's taxes. So roughly, it's going to be like $7 million. So any increase would then have to be deducted. There's parts of that that are also exempt, such as purchases of equipment, things of that nature. Hopefully, we won't have to discuss that. That's the exclusions and so forth. So hopefully, we don't have to use that, but just so you know, we could put up another budget for our community to consider. And if that were to be voted down, that's 0%. So basically, we have to live within the means of last school year. And there's timeframes to put that up, 30, 45 days after the budget vote, too. Questions you have?
On May 14th, you're doing what we always used to do in the auditorium in here?
Yes.
Just because it would be inconvenient to move a camera and a couple of mine for homes.
No, I mean, certainly, we can move it in there. We just said, we're actually going to communicate that it's in here. It just seems a little bit more intimate, knowing that we only typically get 30 to 35 people, and many of them are our students from our economics class. But certainly, if the board's will is to have it in the auditorium, it's an easy fix for us.
We did it in here last year, right?
Yes. Whatever the board's will is, just communicate with us, and we can, we're not sending ourselves to print. We're actually sending it tomorrow, but we were going to have seven to 10 days to make changes.
And let's say, seven people decide to run for the board in the next six days.
Yeah, then we'll put a sign up, and we'll just move everybody in there if it's already printed.
All right. I just, I had trouble with change.
Sure. I know.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Now, for the adoption of that proposed budget. Resolved to adopt the proposed budget of expenditures for the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 in the amount of $20,605,985, and for the purpose shown in the statement of estimated expenditures adopted by the Board of Education. B1 and the same is approved, and the amount thereof shall be raised by a tax levy of a tax upon the taxable property of the school district. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number four, a quick three-part budget summary report.
Is that big enough for everybody?
We have it on our computers as well.
So three-part budget, this is required by law to put together. Pretty much what it does is it breaks out every different component of the budget into three different categories. You have administrative, program, and capital. The goal every year is to keep your program at or increase the percentage, because obviously, that is the reason why we're here. So looking at this, starting with administrative, it did drop from 11.3, or it did increase a little bit from 11.29 to 11.76. And actually, I'm sorry, what you're looking at here is the 23-24 three-part. Do you have?
Ours, the one we, you gave us, or that's on our backup notes, is 23-24, 24-25.
Okay, perfect. No, I got it right. So perfect. So ignore it.
We have it in front of us.
Yes.
And then, program went up from 72.06 to 73.17, which is fantastic. And then the capital component, which is mainly the debt service, that dropped from 16.65 to 15.07. So in total, that matches your budget of $20,605,985, and it shows the 1.17% increase. So with that, any questions? Awesome.
Thank you. New business number five, approval of Bozies administrative budget for the 2024-2025 school year. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Calonia-Mumford Central School District hereby approves the proposed administrative budget for the Genesee Livingston-Stu Ben Wyoming Board of Cooperative Educational Services for the 2024-2025 school year in the amount of $3,272,493. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Now, the election of the Genesee Valley Bozies Board of Education members. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Calonia-Mumford Central School District cast its vote in the annual election of members to the Board of Cooperative Education Services for the following: Edward Levinstein, David Woodruff, and Margaret Foster. Motion, please?
So be it.
And a second?
I can second that.
Any questions or discussion? David's ours, right? From that one?
Bob.
Oh, so he's not on?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number seven, American Rescue Plan and State Reserves Update.
Mr. Nardone's good at this exercise. So this is a report that we have to do every six months. This will be actually our last report, because we're closing out all the fickle monies by September 30th of 2024.
Absolutely. So yes, as Mr. Malasani said, every six months, we were told by the state that we have to publish a report and talk about it in an open meeting, so people know exactly how we're spending the money. So nothing has changed with our art plan, really. You can see from the spreadsheet that I gave you, a lot of the art grants and the Carissa grants have been closed out, so you see the total remaining balance is zero. There is a little bit of money remaining, $355,000. All except for roughly about 53 of that will be expensed by June 30th of '24, and the rest, because it's a summer school grant, will be spent over the summer of '24. And as Mr. Malasani said, by September 30th, everything will be spent, submitted, and then, once we submit the FS-10-F, which is the final report, we get our full money, and then we're just going to wait to get audited. So it shows that 12, of which the state auditors are here now, and they did not pick to look at that. So again, minimum of 12.5% per year. We hit that every year. There's no worries. Maximum of 62.5% per year. Again, we hit that, and we're not going to exceed that, so no worries. Everything was in the parameters set by the state. So does anybody have any questions? Awesome.
Thank you. New business number eight, revision to school calendar. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the revision of the school calendar to include Friday, May 24th, 2024, the Friday before Memorial Day, as a day of recess for all students and staff. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number nine, new business, appointment of head election inspector and election officials. Resolved that the Board of Education appoint the head election inspector and election inspectors from the Livingston County Board of Elections list for the annual school budget vote and board election on May 21st, 2024. Motion, please?
Yep.
And a second?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Jerry.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay?
They have to abstain.
That's what I thought. So six, six, six aye. That motion carried. Number 10, then, cancellation of the board meeting. As Mr. Malasani suggested, resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the cancellation of the April 22nd, 2024 board meeting. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
I'll make it.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. New business number 11, approval of the best value cooperative purchasing. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the best value purchasing as listed in the agenda with Omni Partners. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, s, I got to change that.
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion, but wait a minute, guys. I did that. The first, number 11, is not just Omni Partners. So we should redo this. Number 11 is approval of best value cooperative purchasing. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the best value cooperative purchasing as listed.
I'll make it.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion's carried. Now, number 12 is approval of the Omni Partners Cooperative Purchasing Agreement as listed. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number nine, well, no, executive session. Resolved that the Board of Education adjourned to executive session at 6:42 PM to discuss employment and employee history of particular persons and confidential student records protected by PRPO. Motion, please?
I can make it.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll be back. Resolved that the Board of Education returned to regular session at 8:44?
Seven.
7:44 PM. Motion, please?
Make it.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carried. Last item of business is personnel 1 through 9. We have number one, permanent appointment of building maintenance person. Number two, permanent appointment of director of facilities 2. Number three, approval of substitute. Number four, approval of leave of absence. Number five, approval of adjustment to probationary appointment. Number six, appointment of special education teacher. Number seven, appointment of school bus dispatcher trainee. Number eight, resignation of teacher aide. And number nine, appointment of coaches. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Adjournment, resolved that the Board of Education adjourned the meeting of April 16th, 2024 at 8:45 PM.
7:45.
7:45 PM. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody have a good evening.